I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Sioux Nebraska governing body. The city of Sioux to body with a Nebraska open means act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska open means act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. A participant signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenter shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, enter ask limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Sioux deserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roar.
Welcome, Beck, Chris, Mel, Smith, Hans.
First item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of April 3rd, 2018. We have motion in a second, please go to your votes. Please sway the votes.
What do you favor, Beck, Chris, Mel, Smith, Hans?
Next we have items two through six on the consent agenda. There's a motion in a second, there's any discussion. Send numbers to address to your votes, please sway the votes. Next, item number seven, this is a public hearing. Uh, consideration of the preliminary plat of Country Club Heights Fourth Edition for residential subdivision at the north end of Augusta Drive. Ed Gonzalez is here to kick this off, welcome Ed.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This is a major subdivision application to develop attractive land which is composed of a portion of section seventeen, township eleven north, range three east. The applicant for the subdivision is Steve Connor, the professional design firm is JEO Consulting Group Incorporated. The subdivision involves ten single-family residential lots, subject areas located in city limits, currently located in R3 urban residential mixed density zoning, and in a single-family residential use type category in the future land use map. Subdivision will extend Augusta Drive to the north into a cul-de-sac. All proposed parcels conform to the R3 zoning minimum lot width and square footage requirements, there be no change in zoning. Subdivision will involve relocating an existing city water main and extending other city utilities and new public streets. The developer has designed and plotted a future street to the west for future development, however, there's a substantial floodplain to the west which would minimize the amount of land that could be developed in that area, as well as limit future ingress egress from the south or west for a second access point to the subdivision and area. City Street Superintendent Aldrich has commented about this issue and city staff have communicated this with the developer. Planning and zoning department would like to consider having a future street plotted with the subdivision that extends to the north to encourage future development in that direction. Other city utility department heads had the following comments. Water wastewater superintendent Rich Day reports additional water main valves would be required in the final design plan. Electrical superintendent Luther reports additional utilities must be required in the final plat. Partner rec golf course superintendent Core reports no additional city parks would be required. He will accept a cash donation towards the park improvements in Lululemon. Uh, city street superintendent Aldrich also reports a concern with the proposed storm sewer design, uh, which is on page two of your preliminary plat, of a fifteen inch CMP which is corrugated metal pipe located at south end of the new street. Another concern, no pre or post development drainage calculations have been submitted to date. Once we receive those, they may require increasing the capacity of this storm sewer. Uh, street superintendent Aldrich also would prefer a concrete reinforced pipe rather than the corrugated metal pipe. And then the issue of the storm sewer discharging directly to the west into the adjacent field, uh, with no submitted design plans to channel or direct the flow of that water. Uh, the natural grade, I believe, slopes to the southwest, but apparently there's a possibility of a driving range going in that area as well, which would not be a good situation of drifting erosion in the driving course range. As mentioned, the lack of a future plotted street for future access to the north, which would encourage future development of functional and safe circulation patterns within the new and adjacent subdivisions. The adjacent neighborhood to the south does have a history of drainage issues and no new drainage should be directed towards that direction. The developer submitted its proposed sub, drafts, copy of a subdivision agreement. After last night's meeting at the planning commission, uh, they indicated their find using the city's, uh, proposed subdivision agreement. City's ULDO also addresses the public improvements and the option of the land or the cash donation. The subdivision conforms to the city's comprehensive plan and future land use map with the single-family residential use type. A notice of the public hearing was published, mailed to neighboring property owners and the subject property was posted. City planning commission held a public hearing last night and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the preliminary plat contingent to receiving pre-post development drainage calculations and using a properly sized concrete reinforced pipe for the storm sewer. Everything else should have been included in your packet. Um, I do have, uh, projection ready if you need to see anything blown up. Zoning map wise, flood map wise, preliminary plat wise. Just let me know.
Thanks Ed. Any questions from the council this time? We will have a public, uh, comment portion to this public hearing, which we can do now, if you want to take a minute to think about it. Um, so I'll go ahead and open up the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number seven. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on item number seven at this time? Yes, welcome.
Good evening, my name's Troy Johnston. I'm with JEO Consulting Group. I've been working with Steve, uh, on this proposed development. Uh, obviously Ed did a nice job of, of giving a recap of things that, that took place, uh, last night at the planning commission meeting. I think we are in agreement with all of the staff heads', uh, recommendations in terms of stormwater justification at time of final design, final plat, final sizing of that storm sewer pipe, uh, as well as the, as the type type. I guess another thing I'd like to bring to your attention is, uh, knowing that there's been some sensitive storm sewer drainage concerns in the area. I think there was a little bit of confusion maybe last night as well. And that is, we are not tying into any existing storm sewer pipes in that area. This will, as you, uh, again, we can go, go through the detail, but it will be basically kind of its own system in where, at the south end of our new street or, or just past the existing concrete street, we will have inlets that'll direct that flow directly to the west, uh, to the field. So it's not like we are tying into any existing pipes. I think there was maybe some of that confusion last night, but, uh, I guess I did want to bring that up as well, so. I don't believe I've got any other comments. Uh, Ed and I did have a conversation late this afternoon, uh, regarding the cul-de-sac and the size of such. Um, we kind of dug around, had a little bit of trouble, I think, getting justification on the, on what the city's requirements are in terms of pavement. There's, there's some wording there that's maybe a little confusing, but I guess the bottom line is, we're, we're certainly open and willing to provide you with whatever that is that, that meets the city standard. I think, uh, he had some staff go out and measure a couple different ones, a range anywhere from ninety feet in diameter to a hundred feet in diameter. So, we've got some space there that we can accommodate that. Um, it's just a matter of coming into agreement with what that actually is, uh, when we go to final plat and final design. So, um, other than that, I will entertain any questions or maybe post a public hearing first, but.
So based on the recommendation from last night and the stipulations that they had included, um, you have no issue with any of those as far as accommodating those concerns?
No sir.
Okay. Yes, Ellen?
What's the purpose of having a road stem to the west if that is off floodplain?
I meant to bring this up, so I'm glad you asked the question. Uh, it's our intent, uh, or maybe our desire, and I, I've got enough to hand these out if you would like.
Sure. Try to do the easiest.
Yeah. But in that particular area along that north line of that property, if you want to pass one down there. I guess it's our, uh, intent or, or in the future that, that that roadway that, that stems to the, to the west would again continue west to allow at least enough for another row of, of lots there that I've got labeled A, B, and C. Again, this is, this is future before it would turn north and access that north property. That area and that particular area of the land is not within the floodplain, I, I don't believe. So, um, that would, that would gain that north access that's kind of been requested here as of late, so.
Yes, Ellen?
Great, how does that mesh with potential future plans that we've been discussing for the golf course?
For the golf course, I don't know. We had discussed with our potential driving range that we would go anywhere from a seventeen to a fifteen acre. And I think this goes with the idea of the fifteen acre, which they'll retain approximately two acres on the north end. The north end is out of the floodplain, and so it is developable. And thus, the request for the access road.
Would it not affect any city's plans regarding?
No. And originally, the, the modified plan that's always been on the zoning maps shows a loop coming back down. That would get deep into the floodplain, which is a far less likely development in the future rather than potentially going to nor, in the north at some point in the next twenty years.
Can you tell me when you do your, uh, post-water study, I guess, playing off the driving range comment here, exactly where the driving range is going to be and how this water's going to flow through there and are we going to flood out our driving?
I, I guess certainly I'd want to incorporate or learn about where this driving range is, number one. Number two, yes, we want to be sensitive to what's going on at, at the tail end of our outlet structure. I think there's, you know, I, I don't know again where this driving range is planned for. Uh, I think there's, what, currently three or four other outlets that, you know, that, that discharge in that area. So certainly that would, you know, as, as a whole, I think you would want to, you know, look at that as a whole so there, that there were, were not any impacts to, to that. And whether that's some grading or some, some small, you know, at least as it relates to us and our development, if that, if there needs to be some, you know, a small amount of detention or something at the end of our outlet, we'd certainly be open to that, but.
Well, I think it's something that, I know it isn't worked out yet great, but needs to be worked out and known when the final plat comes around exactly where the driving range is going to be, what the water flow is going to be. Because we're committed to a certain amount of dollars to put a driving range in, and I don't want to have to see cleanup, whatever, or whatever additional costs are maybe included in putting this driving range in place so that water isn't an impact on it.
I think what you're going to see, just estimating on potential, and we were going to wait to make the final design pursuant to this application here, because as you can see, this whole area to the west now is eating up one of the potential areas. We're looking for T-boxes. I think you're going to see the T-boxes just to the northwest where this outlet comes out, and so.
Outlet being the main road?
No, the storm sewer outlet. So your T-boxes are going to be just west, slightly north of, just west of there. And I think, looking at originally the way that the water flew through this area when there is no development, it does channel itself as you continue, continue west. It, most of that water, I don't believe, makes it to the main channel that's way down in the ditch, in the end or south, and then gets connected in with the areas we're already outletting.
Right.
And so, if we can just keep it, uh, we'll probably have to talk to Mel, between Mel and Dan Kayler with the golf course, work out something to slow this water down so it doesn't, so probably some rip rap at the end of where it comes out potentially, just depends on what the flow is. And then look at just directing it south to go where it's going now naturally. And then it's just going to have to be a, an area that Dan and Cody are going to have to deal with. Because there's water through there now. It's, it neanders through there now, so. Which is where we used last night, I think, neandering.
It's going to neander now at a different pace though.
Yeah, this is going to be more direct, but it's the same water. It's the water that falls on this area now is all flowing through the same direction, so.
And I anticipate to be more questions for you, but just since we're doing the public hearing, the public comment portion, I just want to make sure. Anyone else want to speak on the public comment portion before I close that? But you can come back up and answer more questions. I just wanted to make sure everyone has an opportunity. I have forgotten to do this before, so I'm not going to forget tonight. Anyone else have any public comment on this item? If not, then I will close the public comment portion of this item number seven. Are there any additional questions from the council? Dean, yes?
On this water, if you're going to pull that to the west, is that going to have any effect on the farm ground down there? The channeling water any differ?
I, I don't believe so. I think that's, I'm getting a shaking head, so no. The answer is no, from the farmer who farms it, or leases it out, potentially, so. Again, like I said, the drainage from this entire area, this area hits up higher, and some of it does come down Augusta now because it's not directed, because we have the rock and everything else. But a mass majority of the water that's coming off this, because it goes so, it's directed so far to the southwest that it just comes through and then naturally puts itself together about this point, and then heads south directly. It doesn't make it all the way to the ditch to the west.
So I know there's a, in a heavy rain, there's a massive amount of water that comes down all, all through there. I just don't want to see a problem with that.
The major water concern we have is that water that's coming off the course, coming down.
It's the east side of Augusta is where the majority of the water is.
Yeah, the stuff that's hooking through hole number three, I believe. That goes around hole three, that water is significant. This water neanders into the field usually. And this will deflect a lot of the road stuff that's coming straight down.
Right, I mean, I hope they're working with the other development to the east, because when that water hits this new water and then the courthouse water that comes around, I, hopefully we're not creating an impact. I know Ronnie Praska, he's gonna, he'll be the first one to come in and talk to you, I'll guarantee it. And then, uh, the fairgrounds, hopefully we're not going to impact the fairgrounds anymore with more water. I mean, that's consideration we gotta make.
Well, ultimately, he has to do a zero, a net zero, so.
But I hope they're looking upstream, because all that water's coming downstream.
Yeah.
And going west.
Our bigger concern is probably further north than this, even.
Oh yeah, we have the railroad there which stops a lot of it, but, um, I know, I've, I've been down here when, in high water time.
On Hugheside over there, where they build Prairie, they might not be able to build Prairie after we have more water.
So, Ed and I have met with different property owners down there, and as we've told you before when we were doing Fairway Woods, that we will have a budget item for a drainage study, a storm water study through this whole drainage system, all the way up to the north of the city, so.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Yes, Ellen?
Were there any, uh, residents who have expressed any objections as this was going forward?
I've received none. Nobody came, I believe, last night at planning commission and spoke. And Ed has not received anything else either.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
So the only one for me that's been brought up, driving range. Where are we looking at for access to get over there at this point?
Uh, the access point that we'll use is, uh, I think, you guys want to note where that is? Steve, where that's coming across on the east side?
Lots, between lots six and seven would be the access.
That's, okay, you see that on there?
Lead into the cul-de-sac, basically?
Yeah. Just go over the existing house, most item existing house.
And then they'll have to come down and go across through the right-of-way, because that won't be filled in. I'm going to think, yeah. So it'll be on the south side of the right-of-way, coming across towards where the T-boxes will most likely be.
Any other questions or comments on this, on this item? Otherwise, we have two, um, sub-items. We have A, we should consideration of approval of the subdivision agreement for Country Club Heights Fourth Edition. And then B is consideration of approval of the compliance agreement for Country Club Heights Fourth Edition. Yes, Chris?
So, well, I mean, the subdivision agreement, it, not everything is detailed in there yet, correct? It's just, I mean, is, are we approving just a draft? Or, I guess my question is on A and B, why are we approving something that is kind of a blank document? Why don't we have it completed and be part of the final plat improvement then?
Yeah, I would wait till the final on both of those, because we kind of had confusion last night. I think the intent of it was that we were potentially going to be discussing because of the confusion with two of them coming in at the same time. And so I think at this point, it would be more appropriate to approve both of the items at the, um, final.
And when will the water study be done?
They'll put that together before the final. They'll have their net numbers.
So, uh, move to approve the preliminary plat?
Yes, we have motion to, um, is this a simple motion, correct? Your motion, is there a second? We have motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Send numbers, please register your votes. Please sway the votes.
What do you favor, Beck, Chris, Mel, Smith, Hans?
Alright, thank you. Um, next we'll go to item number eight. This is also a public hearing. A consideration of tax increment financing application for Two Creeks Holdings LLC Storage and Warehouse Project. Andrew Willis is here to present. Welcome, Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, Andrew Willis, 233 South 13th Street, Sioux County. The application of the project before you tonight, it can really be thought of as, as kind of the second phase of the previous, uh, project, I think it was from 2015, that Two Creeks Holding, Holdings, uh, has, has built now. Um, it's really, it's a, it's kind of an extension of that. It's the, it's the property next door. Um, and, and Mike Lewis can talk more about the specifics of the, of the project and the business. But, um, this application is for another building, twenty-seven hundred square foot building that really will match that, that building. Uh, it's kind of the extension of what already exists. The, uh, the tenants there really need more space. There, there's room for expansion, which is a good thing. And then this would be to facilitate that. So the application, it was presented, I guess procedurally, just as we start out, uh, this was presented at the February fifteenth CRA meeting. The CRA has recommended approval of the redevelopment plan. Uh, they adopted the cost benefit analysis we'll look at and has approved the redevelopment agreement subject to council's approval. Uh, and then last week, the planning commission, they, uh, the recommendations for approval of the redevelopment plan as well. So, as we look, um, I'd probably jump right into, well, make sure there's nothing in the TIF application. Most of this, basically, the TIF application will have been built into those other documents. Um, so I think it makes most sense. They've adjusted some of the numbers from the application in the redevelopment plan amendment. So if it's okay, I'd just jump right into the redevelopment plan amendment. And again, this is a, a thirty foot by ninety foot building, uh, twenty-seven hundred square feet, located main 13th street. And, um, the, the, the main issue here, it's very, very similar to that 2015 project. Uh, we've got retaining wall improvements, site prep, a lot of, a lot of, uh, that site preparation at a time. There'll be parking, some on-street ends, some off-street parking. Um, and really, this will, again, just mirror that other building. The, it's a redevelopment area, it's zoned R4, and so this is, actually, the project is permitted as a support services, building support services, or support services building. And it's a, it's, it's required a special permit. That actually will be on the May planning commission and then probably before you in May. But, uh, so, if this is approved, uh, they won't be able to give a, a building permit until the special permit is approved. However, it is a permitted use with a special permit. So, assuming this is passed, that would be the next step they would, that developer have to take. Um, one thing that we identified, another thing we identified that's in this redevelopment plan amendment, this project, when we look at the future land use map and the comprehensive plan, it's just right at this, right at the edge of the, of the, the boundary between mixed use and residential for the future land use. And this future land use map was from 2001. So I believe it's being updated and, and this was on the, this was just on the residential side of the mixed use line, but all the property really has been built up mixed use. And so, uh, at the la, at last week at the planning commission meeting, the planning commission has recommended to amend that comprehensive plan, future land use map, to show this as, to include in, in the mixed use boundary. It looks like that will probably be for, be for you as well, next meeting. But just so you know, it's, this really has, it, it has followed what's been built out and, but we, but the, the future land use map really should be amended to show that that's a mixed use property rather than, rather than future residential land use. Um, but those, those are really the two items we identified when we were looking at this as a function of the project. Um, this is, again, currently vacant. It, it would be developed similar to the last, that last stage as a kind of a storage facility, warehouse building. And when we looked at this, we really identified three, three main items for the TIF use. There's the site preparation, retaining wall, the, just the, the, the land preparation, uh, utility infrastructure, extending the utilities, water and sewer, and then, and then the public parking improvements. Those were about thirty-eight, about thirty-nine thousand dollars worth of TIF eligible uses. The, the request in the application and what we put into this is twenty-six thousand dollars. So redevelopment is responsible for, they're paying for everything, but it would be twenty-six thousand dollars in TIF that would be, and that part of, part of this project, the, the approval. Based on, and this was really based on, again, we think we had pretty good numbers to, to gauge this on from the building next door. So, we just looked at it per square foot, build, you know, improvement assessed value of that building. And it should be about roughly a hundred and sixty-five, sixty-five thousand dollars. We used a hundred and sixty thousand dollars as the projected value on this. And, uh, again, that will support the, the twenty-six thousand dollar tax increment financing indebtedness. In the application, the redevelopers stated this really, and again, you can ask Mike some more questions on this, but it's, it's, uh, there's a need there from the expanding business that exists. This is really the right location for it, but because of the conditions in the redevelopment area, uh, there is a need, it's, it's not as feasible with this, without this help, in particular, a lot, a lot of the same site preparation and retention wall issues. The main things in the redevelopment plan I want to note, again, we always look at the exhibit C, which is the statutory requirements. Land is already owned by the redevelopment. Uh, no public acquisition or, or, uh, sale of public property. It's a commercial site, um, no real population density concerns. Uh, it'll need all the land, land coverage requirements in the zoning regulations. Um, no adverse impacts that are anticipated from traffic. Um, again, there will be additional parking added with this project. And as I mentioned, it's, it's R4 zoning and it's a, this business support services building is the right classification, and that will be, it's a, it's a permitted use with special permit. So a special permit's required prior to obtaining a building permit. And that will be coming around next month. Along with that amendment to the redevelopment plan, the cost benefit analysis. Again, when we looked at this, starting with the numbers, uh, base value of the property right now is thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand, hundred thirty-two dollars. We used a hundred and sixty thousand dollars as the completed value. So there's, there's an incremental value of, of almost a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, so about twenty-five hundred dollars per year in tax increment. That tax increment, uh, will support the twenty-six thousand dollar, um, TIF indebtedness. And as always, if, if anything should happen, if that falls short, that obligation is all on the redevelopment to cover any shortfall. Looking at the cost benefit analysis, again, one of the, I guess, particular positive impacts of this project in the redevelopment area is the growth of, the expansion of the current business. And we anticipate that this, this will create a few new jobs with one of those tenants and allow the other tenant that exists right now to expand and continue, continue with some growth that's needed in that area. Really no negative effects on this project. Really, no negative effects on this project. At all worth noting. And again, as I mentioned, the, the, the breakdown, which will all be, there's all estimates at this point that will all be drawn forth with the numbers, but really looking at more than, more than fifteen thousand dollars of site prep, uh, land, land develop, just, you know, pre-development work, retaining wall, just under four thousand dollars of utility extension, and then the cost will be about twenty thousand dollars in the, in the parking. Again, that's, that's more than they asked, that's thirty-eight thousand dollars, but this, this request is twenty-six thousand dollars. So with those, the, that's the, that's the very brief overview of the, the, the plan amendment and the cost benefit analysis that was provided. And then, again, approved by CRA and recommended for approval here. Going on to the redevelopment agreement, again, same standard form you've seen before, so I'm gonna hit the highlights and then I'll take any questions. Uh, this project, the effective date is January first of two thousand nineteen. The, the, the goal is to get this built prior to December of this year. We've slowed it down a little bit, but I believe this is still on, on pace for that. Minimum project valuation, again, is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so as long as he hits that a hundred and sixty thousand dollar valuation, all the numbers should work out. And all the, uh, we'll have, we'll have the, the same standard parking lot license when we, whenever we use, uh, TIF for eligible parking. We make sure we use the public parking license on there, and it's the same form that you see in past projects. And I think that is, again, very brief overview, but I'll leave it at that, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Comments, probably more than questions.
Okay, comments?
Andrew, how are you?
Doing well.
Hey, I'll, first of all, I say I, I'll support this project, I have no problem supporting it, but I also think this is an actual appropriate use of TIF. We're not going after huge dollars to pay for something, we're using it as gap financing, which I think is appropriate. I will make my normal comment I make every time, Andrew, which you're gonna hear from me. And maybe you need to re-educate me on the public parking piece of it, because I can understand when you're doing something in downtown and it could provide parking to businesses and everything else. I'll go back to our old Nebraska Tire Building where we wanted, we didn't need it, but it was in there, to use it as public parking. You know, the comment I made there, that we're gonna park there and walk to Walmart? The, the parking is for the employees essentially, and the business itself. So, they've, they've got more than enough dollars here to cover it, but I still question when we throw that stuff in a, uh, TIF application, when I question whether it really meets the, uh, scrutiny of what it's meant for.
Well, yeah, um, I assumed that question, or that comment was coming as well.
Cause I would do.
Yep, absolutely. But I, I think there's two things. One, one is, from a legal perspective, um, public park, part of this will be on-street parking, part of this will be off-street parking. With the public parking license and allowing public parking there, it meets the legal requirements. So, you know, of, of what it means to have, be an eligible public improvement. Now, the other question, and which is more to your point, is the policy behind it. And the CRA, um, has, has, has decided on their policy that they want to keep, keep pushing this public parking. So, I think, you know, I guess it's, it's a policy decision, at that level, you're free to disagree or, or, uh, change. But I think legally, there's no issue from, from what I see. There's, um, this is tangent from what, the legislature this year's passed. Couple of nu, new interesting things. There'll be a few changes coming, nothing major, nothing that'll change really anything you see, but the, the legislature, as, as they do every year, is kind of looking at either some people reining, you know, thinking they need to, you know, rein in on the TIF abuse, and some people saying, no, we need to expand, and, and there's a little bit of both this year coming. Again, nothing that affects this project or property, any of the procedure that you've seen, but, um, there may be a few interesting things coming here.
Are we gonna keep the tree buffer, or are we gonna tear all the trees out of that area?
Mike Lewis, um, eighteen seventy-two six Sixth Road. The tree buffer to the west, I think, will remain there. Those trees are in the alley, and they're, uh, adjacent between, uh, my lot and the gentleman who owns the, the rental, right there. The, the, there will be nothing affected, the, there's a currently, uh, retained wall that was placed in there last year, and, and the building will run north to south, so it won't affect any trees in there. There'll be maybe a couple of tree trims, because there's gonna be a new pole, there needs to be a pole placed in the, what, the vacated alley, so that they can move the power cable and, um, something over, so that we'll have an allowance for the height of the structure there, because they're crossing our boundary of the property. Is there any other questions that anybody would like to ask about me?
No, that ditch behind you, is that, you know, because you're gonna add more water flow also off the building, is that?
Actually, actually, our water flow with this will decrease, because all the water flow before went to the west.
Right.
Now, we're taking the east side of the building, and that water will flow to Paul Street. So we're actually decreasing the water flow, some of it will flow on the main street, because we'll dump some on, on to the, um, main street, which is north. And then half the building, um, so everything, actually, that, um, the majority of that lot, prior, everything went on that whole lot, the vacant lot that was former habitat, everything went to the west. Now, the only thing that'll go to the east is there'll be, um, sixteen foot of riff line, and that will be, uh, all the other water will be directed to the east, back to the street. So all the drainage, now, currently, the way that lot is set, is almost all that drainage currently now is going to the street. There's nothing going to the west off that property line. So I took the drainage all back to the, to the street, to the Paul Street and to the main street currently. So we've alleviated all the drainage to the west. Except for the, the west fifteen foot of the building, because it'll be a V, it'll be a V-roof building, and the west fifteen foot will be drained over. So it'll, should substantially reduce what prior was there for drainage, and there'll be no water up against the property to the west of us there, at all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That is a, uh, public hearing, so I guess I'll use opportunity to open it up for public comment. Uh, anyone from the public wish to comment on item number eight? Seeing no one, do you wanna add anything? You good? Okay, um, so.
There is one thing I would like to add.
Go ahead, step up.
One, one thing that was discussed at the last meeting, what's that, the, the redevelopment plan? Our special use permit did not get logged for the, so it could be concurrent with this. I had spoke to Ed at that meeting, and he said we don't be, we should be able, if this is approved tonight, hold building permit as soon as tomorrow. And we were gonna get progress on that. The only thing that the special use permit would affect is my permanent occupancy. And it will be, it will be brought back up in the middle of May. Is that correct, Ed?
I was gonna speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Go ahead, Ed.
Yes, as, as Mr. Lewis stated, uh, it was my, my error. I didn't get the, uh, special use permit listed on the last planning commission agenda. I did have all the notices mailed, I did have it published, I had the property posted. I just simply forgot to have it on the actual agenda. What I told Mr. Lewis is, is what he said. I would not have any issues issuing that building permit tomorrow. He could, the worst-case scenario, uh, the special use permit did not get approved, he could sh, shift gears and go to a, go to a number of different other commercial occupancy types, such as a construction, sales service, office, communication service, a number of different commercial occupancies are permitted flat out in the R four. So, again, I would not have any issue not issuing him a building permit tomorrow if he submitted the appropriate plans.
Thank you, Ed, for letting us know. Um, anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? If not, then I'll close the public hearing. The public comment portion of the public hearing of item number eight. Does the council have any additional questions or comments at this time? Yes, Alan?
Are we clear as a council to vote on this without the special use permit? There's no issue legally?
Do you have any issue with that?
I don't have any, I mean, it's legally, the question is for Kelly, but from administration standpoint, I have a concern with that. I think Ed has handled it in regards to, as long as Mr. Lewis is okay moving forward, going, if somehow magically that's denied, that he could still use it for a number of other occupancies that are commercial in nature under the zoning, so.
Yeah, that, that was the only thing I was gonna add, really, the, the approval of this would allow, would allow him to move forward with TIF eligible costs. Uh, the risk then is, yeah, with that building is in the end, but it would at least, uh, there wouldn't be any need to slow this down to, to match that.
Thank you, Andrew. So we have item E and F. E is consideration of resolution approving the redevelopment plan amendment. The resolution has been introduced, and it designated as resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero four. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Some moves, sir.
The motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Next item, F is consideration of a resolution approving the redevelopment agreement and the issuance of TIF indebtedness for the redevelopment project. Someone like to introduce that resolution?
Oh, it is.
Resolution has been introduced, uh, and designated as resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero five. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted? So we, do a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
That was a second.
He is second, then I was motion.
Yes, you're right, sir. Thank you, thank you, Andrew. Um, next item number nine, overview of Find Your Way Home Cultural Festival in conjunction, in conjunction with Bicycle Ride Across Nebraska, hosted by Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership on June eighth, two thousand eighteen. Greg, do you wanna take this?
Yeah, I'll take this one. Um, the city of Seward was approached by SCCDP, uh, working in conjunction with their bicycle across, or Bicycle Ride Across Nebraska event coming up on June eighth, uh, to put on a cultural fair in coordination with that bicycle event in downtown Seward. And what they're looking to do is close a number of blocks of downtown, uh, basically the main intersection of Fifth and Seward Streets, uh, but not Highway thirty-four or Highway fifteen. In the packet on page one thirty-six, I believe, is a proposed layout of their plan for the event as it takes place throughout the day. And so we want to just provide you an overview, because ultimately here, you're gonna consider two, uh, SDL applications, which is the actual official action taken tonight. This is an overview. Ultimately, the major item here is the closing of the roadways on those dates and times. That ultimately pursuant to the fact that there's no highways involved, is a determination to the mayor. Um, so he will sign off on the street closures, and that will require SCCDP to get signatures by all business owners and property owners adjacent there too.
So this is kind of a, a hybrid type of event, and that's why we wanted it on the agenda, so that you are aware what the event is as you're considering the two SDL applications. Um, you, and you, you understand how all this fits together, as was mentioned, there's a separate process for closing the streets. There's a form, but they'll need to go to the adjacent property, uh, properties and communicate with them what this, what this event is, and then they need to sign that and bring it back. And then we have several people within City Hall, including myself, who would then sign off on it. But we didn't wanna get the cart head of the horse, and we won't, and so while they're working on that part of this, we wanted to get this in front of you, so that you could consider, um, the event as well as the, uh, as the applications. So, um, um, did you wanna say anything? Should you come forward and just, uh, can you give a little bit of a overview? Thank you.
Megan, Caleb, Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership. So yes, we're, this, uh, cultural fair will be, um, we are looking to, um, close off, um, Seward Street, um, from about the middle of, uh, about four and a half street, a little past, um, a little past, um, spare time up to, uh, the end of, uh, highway, uh, up to, uh, Highway fifteen, excuse me. Um, we will be having a cultural fair that will incorporate, um, cultural dances from, um, different cultures and ethnic, ethnic groups. We will have a food alley also featuring ethnic foods and things like that. Um, we have been in contact with all of the, um, businesses. I am currently about maybe five, um, signatures away from having the street, um, permit signed, um, had I'm having issues with that. Um, and then we will also be having a, um, street dance in the evening, that is the, um, portion between, um, Highway thirty-four and, um, uh, Seward Street on Fifth Street there, um, just having that section blocked off for a beer garden. We will have, um, uh, two off-duty, off-duty security officers that will be there, um, with IDs and just checking for them or things like that.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions?
Yes. I just wanna address an issue since things are not done yet. Full disclosure, I work for Catalina. So, uh, currently, the intent is to shut this down at two P M., and currently, the way your barricades are set up, there'll be zero access to Catalina.
Okay.
I, I see that as a problem, our business, and it is a Friday, which, believe it or not, Friday afternoon is getting busy at any. The second thing is, I see the stage in where this band is gonna set up. There was an event a couple of years ago, I don't remember the name of the event, and same scenario took place where the band was right outside in the street, and they started setting up at about noon, banging away, doing sound checks, and we could not hear in our own offices talking to each other. So, I, I have concerns on those two items.
And I know in the past, when we've had events on, on the street, uh, and this isn't, not to sing a lot of catalages, they have a drive-through in, in that area, and a parking lot as well, uh, I could not take me a drive-through, but you drive up area. And I know, like, one of the considerations you try to do is push the street closing back beyond their closing time, if possible, so that they still have access to, to that, to their lot. And I don't know, I thought somewhere I saw a four-thirty was, is something happening at four-thirty, is there? I thought I recall reading four-thirty as a time where the street was closed, or?
Four P M. is when food vendors will start serving food, and then on the north side.
They'll already be set up?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and that's, and they will be on the north side of, of, uh, Seward Street, on Fifth Street. So they will be up there. Um, Chris, to address yours, um, we have actually already, um, spoken with Ryan about it, so he is aware of it, and we will accommodate all of your, all, uh, these, these, we will not barricade a parking lot.
And the sound check wasn't a real issue, I was there.
Okay.
I got called about that.
Okay.
That's a real. And it's not something people think about, it's just, uh, the way that the sound echoes down around the, with the buildings, way it is, it does magnify, and it can get, and it doesn't, it turns from music to noise pretty quick because of how it's, uh, how, how it moves in that area, so.
Okay.
That's great, thank you. Uh, any other questions about the event? Otherwise, we can move on to the SDLs.
The only question I have is on the barricade in front of the building that's had a barricade up for over a year or whatever.
It's marked off now.
It's marked off now. Is there gonna be anything to increase that barricade, or is it just gonna remain as is at that point?
We'll have to, you, they'll have to use their snow fence, because it'll be outside the purview. They'll have to make sure it's outside the purview of the beer garden area. So they'll use their same snow fencing that they're gonna use to barricade off the rest of the beer garden, to ensure that that's completely barricaded off as well.
Does anyone have a question or comments about the event? Item A, consideration of special designated liquor license for H and H Recreation, Incorporated doing business at spare time lounge to serve alcohol during a street dance. This is the Fifth Street between Main Street and Seward Street on June eighth, two thousand eighteen. Motion and second, is there any discussion? Sing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Then item B, this is consideration of special designated liquor license for Bottle Rocket Brewing LLC, doing business as Bottle Rocket Brewing to serve alcohol during a street dance. Again, Fifth Street between Main Street and Seward Street on June eighth, two thousand eighteen. Do a motion and a second, any further discussion? Sing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you. Item number ten, consideration of resolution approving supplemental agreement number four with J O Consulting Group Incorporated for the Nebraska Department of Transportation, Carroll K Boulevard, uh, Beta Hillcrest Project. Greg?
Yeah, this is a, um, supplemental agreement. Uh, the main component of the supplemental agreement is to help with the design, uh, of a park feature that was incorporated in the ninety percent drawings that we just reviewed with J O about two weeks ago. Pursuant to the Fed's review of this project and state, uh, N D O T. This whole area is designated in our comprehensive plan as park area, so it's listed and has green space. Under federal rules and regulations, if you remove any green space for any transportation project, you have to accommodate finished green space, basically park space. So they've requested the northern, uh, if we were looking at this on the map, the northern section on the west side of the proposed, uh, Carroll K Boulevard extension, uh, will be designed into a walking, uh, garden area, very similar to what we have up at Plum Creek Park. We'll have, uh, grasses and different flowers and ornamentals and things like that. We'll have, uh, grasses and different flowers and ornamentals and things like that. They'll be planted in there. There'll be a crushed rock or, um, but not, not a finished trail at this point, not a concrete trail. Uh, and then areas for features of artwork or anything like that, I'll later, should the city decide that. So it'll be designed in a way that has that. Um, the full schematics and, and drawings, once we get down to it, will be brought back, um, to council for you guys to review. We'll have, uh, the ability to have the public come back in and comment on as well, probably in June, we'll rest meaning. But to further along with that process, this is a update to our resolution and agreements with N D O T and, um, J E O.
Any questions or comments on this item?
I'll introduce the resolution.
The resolution's been introduced and it's designated as resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero six. Would someone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted? The motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Uh, next item number eleven, this is consideration of ordinance authorizing the sale of lot one Reynolds Edition to Don Johnson Homes Two Incorporated. Greg?
Uh, this is the last, what we refer to as the cemetery lots. Um, this is a full price offer from the purchaser, so we would just bring that forth for your consideration.
Any questions or comments on this item?
The cemetery board did you have approval of the sale?
Yep.
If Don was not introduced, introduce the ordinance. It ordens to direct the conveyance of real property to Don Johnson Homes Two Incorporated to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and designated as ordinance number twenty eighteen dash eleven and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense this such to our rule. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Is that just the sale that makes sense to become an ordinance, has to be an ordinance? Is that, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, again, this is ordinance number twenty eighteen dash eleven. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted? Greg?
Second.
The motion and a second is made for a discussion. Seeing none, uh, the question is, should ordinance number twenty eighteen dash eleven be finally passed and adopted? Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Now, this is our only ordinance this evening, so only one final motion to make this ordinance a part of the permanent record.
So move.
The motion is your second. You have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Uh, next item number twelve, discussion of process for abatement and prosecution of code and nuisance violations. Greg?
Uh, this was an item that was requested at a previous meeting to be brought forth on the agenda to just discuss basically our process of what we do on nuisance and code violations, um, whether that's anything from junk motor vehicles on properties to weeds, um, building code violations, all the way up to demolitions, uh, and anything in between. And so the process I've sat down and me and Ed have talked about this extensive lengths throughout the time that I've been here. And, uh, pursuant to my review with him, for the most part, we have not ever, I believe, fined anyone for a violation. So that's involved with actually going out and issuing a ticket or filing a long form complaint in court for a violation. And we have not sued, uh, anybody for abatement. Is that correct? Where we forced the courts to actually go in and abate the nuisance.
There's not been anybody prosecuted. A couple of years ago, I did impose a three hundred dollar non-compliance fee for, uh,
You'll step up to the podium. Ed?
City ordinance does have a, uh, stipulation for a three hundred dollar non-compliance fee for a non-compliant, non-compliance of a notice and orders. Uh, I was charging that for a period of time until I was directed, uh, by a city attorney to stop doing that.
So.
That was Columbia?
Nope.
And why do we have to stop doing that with the ordinance?
I don't really recall the history on that one.
It's been a couple of years.
Yeah.
It's been a couple of years.
Exactly what the property are talking about, but.
Right.
It's a, it's, is that a one-time fee?
There's a second non-compliance on the books currently as well.
For a different code violation?
Same one.
Oh, for the same one?
I believe. I mean, I'd have to get the ordinance out, but there was a first non-compliance and there was a second non-compliance, three hundred dollar fee on the books.
Did we ever get paid? I don't think we did.
I don't think we did from Mr. Doer. On that one, I did receive a check from, uh, well, not Mr. Doer, Mr. Gar.
And so I, I think just to kind of lay some groundwork for the discussion, what we've looked at is predominantly what we do is a lot of the lower level code violations. So junk motor vehicles we just dealt with, um, but weed abatement, junk generally, uh, we go out and abate it ourselves and then we just charge at the rates that we would charge for labor, equipment use and everything else. Um, and that's how we handle most of our small level ones. Now, Ed and the crews that we have, if we have a situation where a building, say a residential building, would need a new roof because it is substantially in dire straits, may not have gutters on it and stuff, we're not gonna do that. Obviously, we can't abate it by doing the work ourselves. So the question would be, would we feel comfortable as a city going out and hiring a contractor to work on somebody else's house? They may potentially be living in. And I think that's where you draw the line and say, yeah, we probably wouldn't wanna be involved in that. Now, what you could do is go to a court and force the court to make an order to have that be done. And then we would go out and put it out for bid and do everything else. But that's kind of a long process. And the next question would also be is, is that a criminal process or civil process? Do we have that handled by our criminal attorneys, which is the county attorney at this time, or do we have Kelly handle that civil side? Um, transactional, probably, I'm just, 'cause they need to know, Kelly, that's probably outside the general realm of what we do with you.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would, in, in my past experience with other municipalities, that would be done as a criminal prosecu- prosecution and following the, the criminal procedures.
So we would have to make sure that that works into the, in our local agreement we have with county attorney's office to provide, um, prosecution on that side. The other one is we could just note that there's a violation and then have the county attorney, based on the violation, just basically file a criminal complaint, have a judge find them, find them in violation and not do the whole injunction, or not injunction, but order for abatement and everything else that goes with it. 'Cause the problem is you're gonna deal with a bunch of different, unfortunately, you're gonna be dealing with a, a bunch of different people in different situations. We can't force somebody that doesn't have any funds, you know, you can't get blood out of a turnip. We can't force them to go fix their roof if they don't have any funds to pay it in the first place. And so, um, different mechanisms will probably work on that. So.
Just my questions on this, and I, I mean, I completely agree with what you're saying. It depends on the situation where things are at. But, you know, how, how long do, do we intend to leave things on here until, I don't know how we get involved, uh, and, and get involved from the standpoint of helping them out. I mean, I know, I don't know if first impressions exist anymore, but, uh, I, I know they're currently helping a resident in town with issues they had. And I don't know if they're first impressions or if it's just a group of citizens who got together to help get these things taken care of. You know, it, it's, uh, good for the volunteers and the people that volunteer and obviously good for the city and good for the person re- receiving the benefit of it. And I, I just don't know to what extent do we get, I mean, when I see two thousand and eleven and how long stuff has been out here and they're obviously not making progress, according to the notes, it's not like they're, somebody's being defensive and saying, I don't need to do this, stay away from it. They're doing what they can. You know, where are we at on providing assistance and, and trying to help out especially, I mean, 'cause it is, I mean, you'll know the people who can take care of this stuff and are just being lazy and not taking care of it versus those who, it's the situation they're in and unfortunately they can't do it. Is, is there anything the city can do? Is there groups that we can turn these people to to get help?
I think what we should do is have a, and Ed can speak to that maybe a little bit, but I have met with first impressions and they would like to continue to do those things, to be an outlet, to help assist those in need. Um, but I'll, Ed?
Yeah, in the past, we have hooked up, uh, property owners with like Habitat for Humanity, that project going on right now. But again, those are the cases where the property owner has tried to cooperate and tried to make progress versus the other property owners have done bare minimum and several code violations remain that the city can't just go and, and abate. So I work with them as much as I can upfront. I make verbal contact with them, per, in-person contact with them. I ask them what's a reasonable amount of time that they can comply. I'll give them a time extension and just certain cases, the ones that are on your list are ones that just have not followed through for whatever reason. They're all different situations, personal situations, obviously, but some of the names on this list have the resources to come into compliance and have failed to do so for whatever reasons.
So my question is, okay, the one on Columbia that's been there and I saw an issue for a long time. So, you know, you got, sometimes you got some people that are elderly that can't do anything. And then their, their funds are slim. So where do we go with this, Kelly? I mean, do we eventually, is that this house is abandoned? Do we just go in there and push it in, you know, or what do we do?
Well, our abatement procedures, I mean, you can, just like we're doing right now for a, for a demolition property.
It's, I mean, that's what Chris's statement was. You know, since two thousand and eleven, are we ever gonna act?
And the one on South Columbia, they have made an attempt. I mean, you look at the small storage sheds that they prepared, look great. But the main house, haven't touched it since two thousand and eleven.
The one with the house issue, they weren't even gonna get the state, uh, State Health Department in. I mean, so is that a, you know, concern to the city? If the basement's full of water, is it a bacteria? Is it a health issue?
Foundation has holes, there's, there's rodents, there's everything.
I, ultimately, what you would wanna do is, and I don't, in my conversations with Ed, for instance, he has never sought a inspection warrant in the twelve years you've been working here, correct?
No, but I usually get permission granted to inspect. I don't need it.
So as long as he has inspection abilities, he should be able to go into the, and make a determination. And the other question is how we determine it. Past municipality I worked for, it was fifty percent. If the cost of abating and fixing the residence up was fifty percent of the rest value, at that point, we determined it was more likely to be demoed than it was to be rehabilitated at that point. You try to find these communal things that you see across the board in other municipalities, these measures. And then we need to use those measures and follow through on them. The other thing is he also needs to have a budget because ultimately, as you said, we have somebody that's elderly that doesn't have the funds. And we do decide that demolition is the only course of action for us, 'cause again, we're not gonna go in and have somebody fix somebody's foundation or, you know, mudjack, whatever, or redo their roofs. We're just not in that business. That we need to have the funds and the plan and the, and the course of action to go in and ultimately do demolition. So. That would what I'd say in regards to that one. So, um.
I just, I work with three other municipalities. I don't want to comment, this is a very short list. Very dissapropos, I mean, it's, for a city of, city of your size to have such a short list, you, the city should be committed.
And the mayor has compelled me to keep working on it. He doesn't want these on the list for that long. And, you know, all I can say is I've, I've tried and exhausted what I can do to try and help these property owners.
And it does put us in, you know, we wanna be good neighbors. We wanted to help people. And, and at Ed's point, you know, the ones that definitely work with us, we wanna give them the benefit of the doubt and as much time as we reasonably can. Others that are, are less cooperative, may, may do the bare minimum and therefore may, may address the issue, but then the issue, issue may come back next month and have to track the clock over again with new letters and, 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 and it does, um, drag on. And, and I've, I've talked to Ed as well about, you know, let's revisit some of these again and see if we can maybe get some of these off of the list, especially the ones that are, you know, been on there for, for multiple years, even going back, um, quite a while. So we are working on that.
Yeah, my updated bus.
Yeah.
So, and I would say we just need to understand, and this body needs to see, because they're mostly, on a criminal side, you generally give us our own wherewithal to file criminal complaints. We don't seek approval, unlike on the civil side where we may. So if we move forward with this, the administration's gonna make the decisions, unless some other procedure is brought forth, that we're gonna make a decision about proceeding on to the next stages of prosecution and everything else to enforce the, the codes. And so.
And we may have to bump up, you know, the budget, the, the lot, the item, as far as being able,
Property man.
'Cause we had talked about that one year, well, if we put five thousand dollars in there, well, what can you demo for five thousand dollars? So.
Shit.
Yeah, unless you're gonna do a controlled burn, for example, with the fire department, with that.
Charge you.
Yeah, so not five thousand dollars though, will you?
One thousand.
So, so we definitely, um, you know, are going, as we move forward, try and, and address these issues the best we can.
Some of these old properties you have led in asbestos.
Yeah.
Environmental concerns as well. All of them will have asbestos abatement that you'll have to do ahead of time.
So we may have to look at that closer. If, if we know that there are certain properties that are heading on that path, you, you may see as come, um, come with a, a higher line item in the future.
Um, and I just noticed Kelly did the, the note, how short this list actually is. Beatrice had, where I came from previously, had such a backlog of demos that they were doing that they had to force upon people that in the first month of opening their budget, they would spend between fifty and seventy thousand dollars, which they appropriated, and it would be gone in October. And then they would be stuck for the year and they would wait for the next year to come around because they had such a bad backlog of, uh, properties that they could demo, both commercial and residential. And so I think we're, overall, I think members of our community really do value, uh, their properties and maintaining them and taking care of them and, and, you know, doing a good job of putting pressure on each other to make sure that their, their properties are kept up. And so we've done a really good job as a community of doing that. There's just a few. We just gotta get some, some bow ties on.
Any other questions or comments on item number twelve? Speaking of just a discussion, so if, if not, then we'll move on to item number thirteen, consideration of draft request for proposals of for demolition of one thirty-two South Fifth Street. Um, Greg or Ed, do you wanna start this?
Um, I can start this one if you want, Ed. Uh, as you know, uh, the structure at, uh, one thirty-two South Fifth caught fire back in December of two thousand and sixteen. Prior to my arrival, I believe Ed had worked with the property owners and I see that Sandy's here, uh, to work on a plan. Ultimately, what we needed was a definitive plan for what was gonna happen to that building. That was the requirement of the initial notice and orders that were sent out by Ed and John Hughes, and they were working on that. And then my arrival in May, and we tried to work throughout the summer to get a specific plan. I know the property owners had worked with a number of structural engineers, engineering firms, architectural firms to try and do some assessments of that building. Uh, they worked through a number of different people that we were in contact with. And ultimately, we just never got a final plan in place throughout the year. There's, and I think due to the mixed ownership of all the property, there's other elements to that. There's a lot of people involved, uh, in the ownership of that. So they all have to be on the same page to get things done. And so we continued to work through the fall. Uh, as you know, prior to the Fourth of July, we had made some requests in regards to safety in getting the windows boarded up and everything else because we have loose glass and the wind was blowing through and things like that. Ultimately, that was not done sufficiently to our, uh, expectations. And so we had the street and electric crews go out there and board up the facility to make sure that we didn't have any falling glass or window frames coming out. Um, and then we also put the barricades around the building, uh, especially on the front side pursuant to some of the, uh, information that we were provided by the engineering architectural firms. And so that's where it was left. We continued to work through with the property owners. And I know they had been working diligently throughout the, even summer and the fall, through the winter, to try and work with different interested parties to sell the property, to put it to different uses. But ultimately, at those times, it was not fruitful. They were unable to make any sort of transaction to transfer the property. And so we, pursuant to the request of this body, made a deadline for a notice and order to either provide a plan for, final plan for what was gonna happen of demolition. Is that correct, Ed?
The last notice and orders gave the option of just demoing.
Yep. And so that was issued, I believe, in late February?
February first.
With a, uh, once everything went out, uh, certified mail to all of the interested parties and property owners, they were given a deadline, uh,
March fifth.
March fifth. And that passed without anyone signing on to demo or, uh, appealing that request. And that passed without anyone signing on to demo or appealing that request. And so, ultimately, we've moved forward and put together a draft request for proposals here for demolition of the structure at 132 South Fifth Street. We looked through a number of other cities and communities, draft proposals for similar demolitions in downtown buildings, and that's what this is based off of. I will note that it includes two, at least one alternate, and I have shared this with the property owner. The alternates to see what the number would be. I estimate that you'll see, when the bids come in, that the alternate requests the removal of the breezeway that is not part of this property, it's owned by Bonnie Will. And we requested that because we wanted to see how much lower the demolition would be without having to structurally support the breezeway, which is a significant cost, we estimate, in the whole demolition process, if you were only to demo 132 South Fifth. And I did note that to Bonnie's day when I did stop and speak with her, that that was in there. Obviously, she would have to sign off on, because it is her private property, she'd have to sign off on moving forward with that, and then we would just brick up and redo the masonry on the edge of her main building then. And so, but we wanted to know that number, so that is included as an alternate. So, when they do bid, they'll bid that as well.
And Bonnie's good with that?
I don't know that she's good with it. She's good that it's, she knows that it's in there, but it is entirely within her control. I don't know how we could force her to do it. We would just have to pay the more expensive cost to leave it up, structurally support it, and there'd be some questions on how you would retain some of those funds, things like that. So, we just wanted to include it in there.
And again, this is, this is a request for a proposal, that doesn't mean there'd be any action.
Yeah.
And I imagine, I think, if Sandy's here, if she wanted to say something, you know, regardless, even going out for a proposal wouldn't block the council into doing anything. It would just be gathering more information for later consideration. Did you want to, Kelly?
I just, the other alternative, so you know that the other alternative's in there. Traditionally, when you do this, you put in a concrete pad adjacent to the northern and southern property owners. Here, it may be just the wall that holds up the breezeway, but nevertheless, due to hydrostatic pressure with water coming down where it didn't before, we put in a concrete pad approximately eight feet out from each building to divert water into the center and then out to the alley, so it doesn't go straight down and then go against the foundations of the wall of the building or anything else. I put it as an alternate to just concrete, the whole darn thing. I mean, we may want to do that, if our idea is, we're going to leave it vacant for a while and make it parking or public space or whatever, when it, you know. And so, I just wanted to know what the difference between having two eight-foot pads versus just concrete, the whole thing off until somebody else came in. Ultimately, if somebody wanted to rebuild on it, you wouldn't want to have all that concrete down, but, so just to know what that number was for consideration, it was putting us an alternate as well.
Sandy, did you want to go up and speak on this?
Just takes me a little bit to kick off.
Just kick her out.
Okay, my name is Sandra Nauman. We have a new owner for the building. He is aware of all the conditions of the building, is not concerned at all. He has the means and the know-how to do it. Anything I've told him, he said, fine, no problem, he can do it. He is out of town, he is asking for 45 days, 30 to 45, maybe 60 days, to contact the city and know what, he knows what needs to be done, he's already been through it, but to get the permits, all the legalities. But it will not be torn down. The exterior is his first thing, and then later, the interior. So, that's where we're at.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions? Yes.
So, what's the plan for the building? Can you share with us what the vision is?
Well, that's up to him. I'm not going to, you know, I can't. I really, he has his ideas, but it will be a building that will be for business downtown.
No residential? There won't be any apartments?
I don't know about that. I guess that depends if he puts a roof on high enough to put the apartments in.
Thank you.
Any more?
Any other questions? Dean?
Do you have a, do you have a contract with him or any?
It's all signed, all done.
It's all done.
It's all done. He is going to be out of town for a week. And so, that's why we need some time to get whatever.
Thank you.
But it will be a going building and be up, and that's what the citizens of Stewart want. That's what they've been telling me, I get calls and calls and calls. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chris?
Greg, Josh, Ed, I suppose. I mean, I know we've had structural engineers from this place, and I'm not a structural engineer, but I remember reading these reports and I don't remember seeing anywhere in that report that says rebuilding this is possible. Or am I wrong?
There is, correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, there is some that said that you could do that.
There was what?
Yes, there was.
Yeah. And so, we're not saying it's impossible. I think what me and Ed was...
What was his comment?
He said that he...
I was questioning when the structural engineers were through what their report was on the building.
We differ on our reports.
I think, I think the reports themselves differ. Ultimately...
Well, we had a structural engineer that said the building is savable, and that's where we processed, went, went through, and we got the person who can do it and the equipment and the know-how. It's going to be great. I just, so pleased.
What I would say, and I didn't know what Sandy was going to divulge, because I just ran into her right at the end of the day, when I think some of this was getting tied up in the end. But ultimately, what me and Ed will do is, we will work with Sandy's buyer and we'll communicate with them immediately and note that we'll need a structural engineer to come out, whoever they're going to use, to come out immediately, make an assessment of the building, and in their profession and judgment, if they think...
He has three structural engineers, and he'll choose one of them.
Yep. We just need structural engineer drawings that define what his plan's going to be, stamped within a reasonable amount of time. What we'd also like is an assessment on the facades of the building, and they can make an assessment, because there's been this back and forth about whether the facades are safe or not. And so, if we have stamped reports by a structural engineer that's safe and they've done what they need to do, do any reinforcement or masonry work, then we can also remove barricades and things like that. But until we have stuff from an engineer that is official, we can't make any changes on the building. And I think ultimately, the first one we'll have is, they're probably going to need to get in there and get a roof on it.
I guess, John?
We got to do something, though, with the barricades in the building. I watched a young lady in a stroller yesterday go around the barricades and about getting hit by a car because they have to go around these barricades. And then I come back later, after coming back from the barricade, and I watched a senior citizen walking into the, doing the same thing, walking and going into the, that hair place there. We got to do something with the barricades. Those are, they're not right for the process and we're actually creating more of a safety hazard, making them walk out into the line of traffic.
Well, I'll be honest with you, they shouldn't walk on the line of traffic. They need to go around. We also have an alleyway in the back that's accessible. There's a reason they're there. They're going to feel a lot worse when it's, God forbid, something were happened. If you've ever seen a brick fall off a building when it's demoed, how far they'll shoot out?
Well, if that's the case, if you're going to find the structural design process for a fallen building, it's one and a half times the story of the building, which would be clear out in the middle of the street plus. So, if you're walking around the barricades, you're still going to be within the fall range. I'm done with saying, well...
Chris?
If this building can be saved and kept in place, I mean, it keeps the look of the downtown and the way it should be, and I'm all for that. However, not knowing what's going to be coming back from structural engineers and what really needs to happen, and maybe we look at it and you know what? I can't make that happen because it's, it's more than I thought it was. It doesn't hurt us to go out for the RFPs and have the information and knowledge instead of starting the process 90 days later. We, we need to keep this process moving just for our own sanity and knowing that we have our process in place to get it taken care of if this process falls through.
And obviously, the council have to approve any agreement with anyone that would submit an RFP anyway. So, just because you would do this tonight, again, we would just sit on it until we, at the appropriate time. And obviously, if, if this is able to work out, like it sounds like it could, I would agree, that's the best thing for everybody and we want to allow all that to happen and do everything we can. But I, I think Chris makes a good point as far as not stopping at this point, because it doesn't do any harm to proceed with this tonight, because it doesn't, it doesn't do anything other than to get more information.
And if we can, if we can do something, because, you know, to Greg's point, if you walk an alley, there's potential of falling bricks in the alley as well as in the front. So, if we can inspect, at least do, maybe do something in the front, ability inspected to see if there is any hazards going to fall. I know we shared everything up to windows and, you know, maybe give a little bit of walk space where people can walk around versus out in traffic. I mean, if we can inspect it?
It's been inspected by a structural engineer and the barricade replaced at his direction.
So, the unfortunate part is, you have to go off whatever the last report you have is, and some other structural, coming back and put stamps, a report and says, I think it's fine, I'll put my stamp on it, the liability's on them if they're wrong.
Now, that is my question for Kelly. Where does, where does liability stand right now if you took the barricades down? If somebody, a brick falls off, somebody gets hit?
We know, we have notice of a hazard.
From that standpoint, we have no choice but to delete them. And, and keep in mind, the barricades originally went up before the 4th of July, prepping for that. And it's unfortunate that we'll have another 4th of July with this building looking the way it is downtown.
I think, you're talking about this 4th?
Correct.
I think they'll be gone by then.
I would hope so.
Well, they would, if we were, if I still had it, we were putting up the supports this week, and according to him, as of March 1st, or whenever it was, we then could take the barriers down. We were not given that information any earlier than the March, this March. So, we, you know, anyway. But I think his plans are immediate. I mean, it's not, he's got the capabilities to do it. We've got a good...
Just point of clarification, I think the structural reports were identified in the structural engineer's report. That was their structural engineer, not ours, so.
We're excited.
Yep.
We hope it all works out. So, unless there's any other questions, was there a motion?
We moved to go out for a bid.
A motion and a second is in for discussion. Saying no, do you rest your votes? Please weigh the votes.
Any favor back?
Thank you, Sandy.
So, if I understand right, you're going to give him some time?
Absolutely. We're just going to go out for the, the proposals, but we just want to have that information literally sit on his desk until we know what you're doing over there. Thank you, Sandy. Okay, item 14, city manager's report, brief, brief report.
Oh, the report is included in your packet. If you have any questions, let me know.
Motion approved.
Do you have a motion? There's no questions or any comments? Okay, we have a motion to accept. Is there a second? Motion and a second, do you rest your votes? Please weigh the votes. Any future, uh, gen items or measure of action?
Possibly discussion on acquiring a grant for a fire truck to match the funds from, uh, rule board.
I think you can talk with...
Yeah, we're, I don't know if we're going to do that as a gen item or what. We have a lot to do, and we, we got money coming our way, but we need a match.
Okay.
No other items? Next, we have upcoming events, we have the street closing for the summer, we're going to kick off, May 19th, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Fifth Street from south of Valley to north of South Street intersection and city parking lot, east of Memorial Library. Jonathan usually fills us in. Any other events? Do you know of any other events? Would you like to share with us?
There's lots of stuff happening there.
We'll check your website.
Mayor's Glugel. Mayor's Glugel.
Got it. June 22nd, Friday, June 22nd, Mayor's Glugel Classic. There's a motion to adjourn. Uh, Friday, June 22nd. We have a motion to adjourn. Do you have a motion and a second? Do you rest your votes? Please weigh the votes. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.